Good evening and welcome to the Edgewood City Council meeting for October the 20th, 2025. You will stand for an invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we ask you look at the homeless and the sick and to get them back into society as quickly as possible. We also look at our first responders, our EMTs, our police, our fire, the standtorners, they watch over and protect us as well. Also tonight, what we do, we do for the entire good of the community and not for anyone's particular project or anyone's particular interest. Also, we also look at the armed forces from the standpoint, those that are protecting us on a 24/7, especially those that are from the local area, watch over and protect them as well. We do all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. And I have Belinda Nitschke as our City Clerk taking our minutes tonight. I have Mr. Frank Wickman, our attorney, sitting in tonight as well. Welcome to you all as well. At this time, Belinda, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Varlich?
Here.
Mr. Messmer?
Here.
Mr. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Shriver?
Here.
Mrs. Spears here. Dr. Swilly?
Mr. Thielen?
Here.
We do have a quorum this evening. I'd like to welcome the council members as well. Tonight, we always have on the agenda citizens wishing to be heard that's not referring to the agenda. And if you're interested in coming and presenting to us this evening, this is the time to do so. If not, if you wait for a topic to come up, you can have discussions at that important time. With that, I guess we'll just move on. Everybody has the agenda in front of them. Does anybody want to add or adjust or rearrange the agenda?
Mayor?
Well, okay.
Go ahead. I have a resolution that I would like to be put on the agenda for council to consider, please.
Okay. And this is in regards to the FEMA applications for designation of the applicant, and we're making Brian Deener the applicant individual, on the tab V-3-2. Okay, Jim. We'll add that to new business number 20. Okay.
I had a question actually for Rob, and I was going to ask this. So I don't, he's not going to get up and speak. So I'd like to add that I had a resident ask me about dead trees on their property, and if there's anything the city can do to help her.
Yeah. Josh Weiss, could you just ask Rob when you get finished with your stuff? Will you ask Rob if he can come up and address that, please? Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to ask Rob.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay. Well, I guess I introduce to you October the 6th, council
minutes. Entertained a motion and any adjustments to those on October the 6th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve them.
Do you hear me?
Second.
Rob? Any discussions? If not, call the roll, please.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
Mr. Varlich?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
The minutes for October the 6th stands as presented, 2025. Tonight, we're honored to have our executive director from the PDS, Area Planning. Josh, if you would like to come up, introduce yourself. Good evening. We're glad to have you.
Thank you, Mayor. And so I, Mayor Link and Mr. Deener, thank you for putting me on the agenda tonight. As the mayor mentioned, I am Josh Weiss, Executive Director of Planning and Development Services. I started in the executive director role a little over two months ago now, and so I'm making my rounds to all the city council meetings to say hi. But you all really like Monday evening meetings, so it's taken me a little bit of time to get here to Edgewood. So, but thank you all for having me tonight. And again, as we continue working together to support our community's needs, I'm just here to say hi, and so you all can put a face with the name. I know I've worked with some of you in the past on some issues. Just a bit about my background. I joined PDS a little over four years ago to design and launch the Community Development Initiative, which aims to serve as that local economic development expertise for all of the cities and then the county itself in Kenton County, realizing that really only one of our cities, Covington, has a full-fledged local economic development program. City of Erlanger has a staff member, but they're focused on some other things. So really just to move a lot of those issues forward. I actually grew up here, mainly in Edgewood. Glad to say, my family is still here. I did move down the road a little ways to Erlanger a few years ago, though. So I'm back in Lakemont and Erlanger, although that is like the new Edgewood back there. Everyone who lives in Lakemont, I think, pretty much grew up in Edgewood. So, lived there for a few years, parishioner at St. Pius up the road, and attended Kenton County Schools, graduated from Scott High School, and then completed undergraduate graduate degrees at Northern Kentucky and Thomas More. So I think that's probably about as local in Kenton County as you can get. Like I said, my professional experience prior to joining PDS a few years ago was mostly in city government on the economic development side of things. Rick was my boss for a few years, and Belinda was there, too. We got some Florence alumni in here. I think we like Kenton County a lot more, though. So, but anyways, served as Economic Development Director there for several years, city administrator for a couple of years, and then served a few years at Ready Cincinnati, which is the Regional Economic Development Initiative across the river. So as you all know, at PDS, we manage several key functions for local government jurisdictions in Kenton County. Obviously, planning and zoning is the issues we most get involved in. But then also, we assist our cities on infrastructure engineering, building inspections, Link GIS mapping, and then, as I mentioned, community development and code enforcement as well. PDS, we also support and are the managing partners for the Planning Commission, the Link GIS Multi-County Partnership, and then the Joint Board of Adjustment and the Joint County Code Enforcement Board. So we staff all of those. I view our role as PDS as really we are an extension of the local governments we serve. We are not a, while we may be a separate entity on paper, we are literally an extension of your departments and your staff. So I take that very seriously and also take very seriously that our team carries out the individual visions and policy directions from the respective mayors and city councils of all the cities, which I think makes Kenton County unique. Also, I very much believe that as an organization, we need to operate in openness and collaboration. So anytime any of you need me or have a question, I am available whether to come to a city council meeting here, or meet with you, or speak with you one-on-one. Always available. And that's a priority for us at PDS. So again, I know your time is precious at city council meetings, so I won't take up much more of your time. But again, just thank you and glad to be here tonight. Happy to answer any questions. And I am not going to talk about dead trees, but Rob happens to be here. So I will let Rob deal with the dead tree issue.
Josh, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We caught you. We're glad to have you.
I appreciate it, Mayor. I know several of you, for those I haven't had the pleasure of meeting. My name is Rob Heims. I am the Codes Administrator with Planning and Development Services. I'm responsible for supervising the team of zoning administrators as well as code enforcement officers. So to jump right into Councilman Shriver's question, we frequently get questions about dead trees. And the simplest way that I can put it is unless a potentially dangerous tree is overhanging a public right-of-way and poses a threat to public ways or persons thereon, most ordinances will not address them. The majority of the time, a tree, suspected dead tree, diseased tree, is going to be a civil issue between property owners. When I was very new in this line of work, I sat through, I hate to say, it was a mind-numbing neighbor law class, and it focused a lot on property line issues and tree issues. Not that, I often say, I'm not an attorney. I don't play one on TV. But what the previous county attorney suggested was notifying your neighbor that you have concerns that the tree could potentially fall or otherwise damage your property. You put it in a letter, send it certified with return receipt requested. And when you get that green card back, it was valid service. And if something were to happen, you would show, give that information to your homeowner's insurance. And your homeowner's insurance is going to basically go to bat with theirs.
Rob, over time, so if someone has a dead tree, they typically will start losing a lot of branches, getting into yards, pools. We've had that complaint. Does that ever fall under the category as a nuisance? Or is that stretching?
I believe it's a stretch. I mean, technically, the International Property Maintenance Code definition of rubbish includes yard trimmings, tree limbs, and those kind of things. But let's say that my tree has limbs falling in your yard, the violation is going to be addressed where it's present. So if the tree limbs and branches are in your yard, you're going to get the notice. So normally, we try not to go that route. So, you know, we've had several people question, well, why can't the city adopt an ordinance, so on and so forth. The way that I will, I guess, illustrate is if the city of Edgewood decided they were going to put an ordinance on the books that a dead tree could be addressed under the code enforcement process. If I issue a citation for that violation, the property owner appeals that to the Code Enforcement Board. The Code Enforcement Board looks at my pictures and says, yep, we think that tree's dead. We're going to uphold that citation. Through the code enforcement process, that property owner has the option to appeal the board's decision to district court. If we get called into district court, the first question that I'm going to get asked as a code enforcement officer is if I am a certified arborist. And when I answer no, then it does absolutely nothing. We can all agree that something may look dangerous, can look like it could potentially cause all kinds of damage to a property. But my personal opinion is the civil route is the best way to keep it.
I mean, I've already passed that along to them, but they're assistant, so that's why I'm asking the question, just to cover everything and say I did my homework and I can bring that back to them.
Certainly.
And since you brought up the right-of-way, John, you might notice this, too. When I turned on the street that they're on, they have two trees that kind of go like this. I can't believe the bus hasn't complained. And I'll give it to you, Brian, after the meeting.
Yeah, just give it to me.
I don't even know how the garbage truck and the bus fits through there.
Yeah, we can look at it.
Yeah. Many of the city ordinances have a minimum height that those have to be cut to, whether it's over a sidewalk or a public street.
It's going to be close. One of the trees is just leaning very hard, and it's probably in the right-of-way. Probably our responsibility.
We can look at that.
Thank you.
So real quick, Rob, if it is on across the right-of-way, then it comes to your office, and then you make the notice. But if it's between two individuals, two citizens, then it's between the two of them.
Correct.
To put their person on notice.
Correct.
Okay.
And the key to it there is, in the city ordinance, when it's overhanging a public right-of-way, it says, "Dangerous tree or other." When you hear from property owners, it's always dead tree, dying tree. The city's ordinances are, of course, in place to protect public interests. And if it's overhanging in the right-of-way, we should be involved.
Well, I think on the insurance, and if the homeowner is aware of it, it's a dead tree, and it falls on the other guy's home, he's responsible for that tree.
You've got to be put on notice, though, legally. And you do that with a certified letter.
Yep. Not that I want anybody present or viewing to construe that as legal advice. Obviously, consult your attorney. But that came straight from our previous county attorney as a suggestion.
And I always tell people, it helps in the insurance claim. It doesn't automatically make them liable because there are things in your insurance that say act of God. And so they would argue that that tree was maybe alive, and it was just a storm, so it was an act of God that fell. And so my customer should not be responsible for that claim that fell on your house, and you need to have it. So I always warn them, the best means of doing something is the notification that gives you that ability. If the tree just randomly on a day, a big branch fell out and cracked off and hit your car, you would have a good, good chance of that.
And document, document, document. If a limb or a branch falls on a sunny day that wasn't windy, that can give you some ammo versus the act of God argument.
Okay, thank you. Frank, do you have anything that you would like to add or clarify?
That's true.
Okay. Thank you much.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Appreciate it. With that, I will jump into the mayor's report. The mayor did not make the mayor's meeting on Saturday, so I apologize for that. But...
You have to get on the mayor for that.
Well, yeah. With that, Josh probably could give us a whole update on that.
He probably could.
Well, yeah, let's do it. Let's do it. Thank you. He sat in for it.
Joshua's your alternate.
Yeah, that's my alternate. Thank you.
I'm happy to.
Woo!
Okay.
That was Senator McDaniel.
Yes, Kentucky League of Cities, Gracie Kelly. Thank you, Replaced Brianna. She was on hand, and Senator McDaniel received a Kentucky Friend of Cities Award, so that was nice. What are we talking about? Talked about scooters. Again, you were at the meeting in Taylor Mill, Mayor, where they talked about the 30, 35 mile per hour electric scooters. So Mayor Heeman had an update from the KLC Convention in Owensboro that that is on KLC's radar.
Correct.
And just kind of continuing to explore it. Edgewood, Fort Mitchellville, Hills, et cetera, are not unique in dealing with that issue, which I think we can probably all attest to. Now, you're taxing my mind now. So there was that, various updates from various cities. But the highlight was the Kentucky League of Cities presentation to Senator McDaniel.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks. It took place. I had a wedding to go to, and it was in a bar. So that was very exciting as well. So it was exciting on Saturday. But I'd also like to say thanks to Lucas, and thanks to all the other people here from the standpoint of putting together 300 bags of candy, and all the volunteers that came to put on the displays and things. And we have, I think we have coupons in there for Chick-fil-A. But at the same time, for the spooky Sunday that we had to cancel on Sunday as well because of the rain and because of the wind. But again, I want to say to Lucas and all the volunteers that came and stuffed those bags. I've now dictated that the fire department gets part of those bags, the police department gets part of those bags, public works in heaven, too. They need to distribute them on Halloween. And if you have to just throw them out the windows of the trucks, just don't litter, but make sure that the kids collect it. Take as many as you can. But from the standpoint, put your lights on, go to the intersections, as we've done in the past. But we will get rid of the 300 bags.
What happened, that early this morning, the police were getting all of them. Did Tom come over and get all mad because Jimmy was getting all the candy bags?
Well, you know...
They got into a fight over candy?
What was it? I don't know. Anyway, I'll stay out of that. I'll stay out of it. But anyway.
He said, "I'll make it fair."
That's right. But thank you very much. And again, appreciate it from the standpoint that there was a lot that went behind it to get this together. Lucas had all the volunteers from the schools ready to go, and it was just a matter of timing. And we did it in such a good timing from the standpoint that it wasn't at the last minute from the standpoint. Everybody knew it on Facebook. And I did a couple of calls. The people were already got their costumes ready to come, the adults and their children. But at the same time, we'll do it next year. Save those costumes for next year. The other thing that's kind of important right now is TBNK is basically going to start up City Talk. And City Talk basically is having the different cities come and talk on the shows. And they're going to have a segment starting with Steve Hensley and Dave Hatter from Fort Wright. And that's going to be, the first one is going to be on November the 4th. That's what it's going to be. And then it'll certainly be run on TBNK. And then, of course, they're going to have, the different mayors are going to be coming as well to discuss different issues within their cities. So TBNK is going to be starting this up, and we appreciate this from the standpoint that everybody's going to have different sessions to come and do their little presentation. But this, basically, the first one that is going to be, is going to be about the bridge at Fort Wright from the standpoint of all the construction that's going to happen on the new bridge going in and the new roundabouts that are going to happen in Fort Wright, and the new construction that's going to happen. So this will be the start of it, and it will be continued, John. So we're asking, we're thanking Tim from the standpoint of setting it aside. And like I said, we'll keep you informed of the city of Edgewood, Erlanger, the rest of it. But the first one's going to be November the 4th. And that's going to be a discussion with Steve Hensley, because that's going to be the emergency. We've got to get Life Squad down to the highways as well. The construction is going to be down to a couple lanes, three lanes, one lane, different times. So this is the start of what's going to happen. And as we know, the bridge is not going to be finished in probably 2030 now, 2029, due to some of the delays and some of the things that have been going on behind the scenes. Was scheduled for '27, but it's a three-year, four-year project for the bridge to be complete. So we'll keep you posted. But like I said, the first one's going to be Tuesday. And they're asking those folks that come down, if you can put the presentation on. With that...
And John, that's going to be available on their website, and they put it on Facebook, and it's also going to be available on YouTube.
Yes, it will be. Yeah. So everybody can click on, and there are different little sessions of their TVs and so forth. And like I said, the rez are rez-ing it, not just because of the bridge, but just again, to build community, again, with PDS, with other areas as well from the standpoint, what they do, the libraries and so forth, and the cities, which I think is going to be a great, great exposure and transparency that's going to be. So thanks to Tim in getting this, and we'll let you know as well. With that, that's about all I've got. And I appreciate my presentation, or Josh's presentation as well. But we have the staff reports, and I'll start off with Green. Brian, anybody had any questions for Brian on his reports?
Just an update on how Palmer's doing. Last time we spoke about the right-of-way for Dudley, and I see in your notes that you've got your fingers crossed. Are we still looking at roughly a March 15th out to bid?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. So we're working, they're cleaning up the last, I saw all the deed descriptions of every one that we would have to get. So once they start through that, we should be good. I'm hoping that by January, the historic preservation will have that done, environmental will be done, and then we can do the deed, all the right-of-ways that we would need to have. There are no permanents, which make it really nice. So we can go pretty quick throughout not having to get permanent easements or right-of-ways.
Is there still 39 of them, or have they cut that down?
We're debating and trying to get that cut down. Yeah. Because, and I don't know if I told you this or not, but, you know, one of those is with the city itself. So we were arguing over the fact that we don't have to get a right-of-way for work to be done on our property because we're doing the work. And it's been kind of an argument back and forth that, well, you still have to go through that process and pay someone to go. And I remember this when we did the first two phases of Dudley. We had a contractor that we paid to do all the right-of-ways and get all of the easements and everything. They actually sent me a letter saying, hey, the city is interested in getting a temporary easement from you. You have the right to get so much money for it. We wrote a check to ourselves that I signed, and signed to accept it. Then we had to go through that process, and they actually filed it on the court that there was a temporary easement. So it's a very strange bureaucratic kind of thing, but it's not been fun. But it does point out a lot of the bureaucracy that you have to go through for federal money.
But that's a lot of money.
It is $4 million. Yeah. When Dudley Road is completed, I think everyone should know from, I call it 3L from Madison all the way to Dixie Highway, that is going to end up being close to $16 million total project. 60% of that was paid by federal funds. I don't know that Edgewood, if we, we might still be on the hill working on it for that type of money. I mean, it's, you know, $12,000 that we, $12 million that we've received in federal funds that we haven't had to come up with on our own. So it's not fun dealing with them. It's not fun taking the phone calls of why we don't have it completed yet. And Dixie Highway got new blacktop in one day. Why can't we put new, you know, why does it go on? But I believe it's the best thing for Edgewood, for us to fight through it as a staff, to try to get that done, to bring in that money. The same with on Thomas More Parkway. That's $700,000, $800,000 to mill and put blacktop down. And we just received a grant to do that. So we have another $400,000, $500,000 coming in to do that. Horse branch is the same way. We have a grant to help do that. We couldn't do these big, long streets without it. We could, but we would do no other street in a neighborhood. Their streets would look horrible.
I think it helps to remember, as I'm driving across the bumpy sections of it, and I'm disappointed that $4 million is coming of it, and it helps me to be more patient.
Yeah. And there's not one person, including anyone on council, the mayor, myself, staff, or anybody, that would be like, I wish this could just get done today, and we can move on. And it's, you know, I get emailed and conversations all week long regarding that project. So we're pushing hard to get it finished. So we're getting there. And when we do, we'll have a little party, and we'll get it done, and it'll be done. It will look nice to do that. The other thing that's not in my report, and I don't know why I forgot to tell you this, because I think it's good news. If you'll remember back in the spring, our auditor, that's not good news, what I'm going to tell you. It's later good news. Our auditor with Rankin and Rankin, Jim, who did our audit for many years, passed away. And Rankin and Rankin was no longer doing audits for communities. So we had to go out and find an auditor to do that. So we advertised for those auditing services. It is very difficult right now to find an auditor that will do municipal audits. One, because it's just not a lot of money in it. So we did find two of them in that, when we did the process, one out of Ashland, Kentucky, and then one local. The only problem was, the local firm that bid was $30,000. We normally were paying about $12. And the one from Ashland was $25,000, and they weren't local. So we were going to have to deal with that kind of distance issue. Probably would have been fine to do an audit. So when those came in, we started sitting down and working with Chamberlain and Owen, who do our CPA work on a monthly basis for us. We have negotiated with Bramley and Ackley to do our audit for $15,000. And we signed, and we actually asked them if they would sign a three-year contract. And they agreed to sign the three-year contract with the agreement that we would keep Chamberlain and Owen on to do our monthly books, because it keeps them so clean that the audit can go very quick. They know that they get a real good set of books when they're handed over. So, and I don't know why I didn't put it in the report, because we, in theory, have saved the city $45,000 over a three-year period for auditing services. So you will, and Bramley and Ackley have, they have done the city's audit in the past. And so they're familiar with Edgewood, and they do a great job of auditing. So I think that's a good thing. They're starting, I forget, was it, could be in the next couple of weeks that they want to start doing the audit. We didn't sign the agreement until September, but everything is ready for them to sign it. They do believe they're going to be a little bit later than normal because they're getting a late start. So there'll be late January, early February, before they're able to give you a completed audit. So that was the only kind of bad news of it was. And it really didn't hurt so much, because I think even last year, it was January before we even got the audit. It was late. And we got the presentation to it. We were not violating KRS, any statutes, and having it. It just has to be reported to, by a certain date, and it will be reported to council by that date.
I thought it was January 31st.
It is not. I think it's probably March, end of March or sometime. It's all, yeah, it's close to April. You have to do your own. So, anyway, good news and bad news. We don't get the audit early, but we get it for close to $15,000 cheaper than somebody who actually bid on it. So I thought that was positive. So I thought that was positive.
We appreciate the negotiations. It does work well. Anyway, questions for Belinda on our city clerk? Fire for Tom? General Services for Rick? Police with Jimmy?
I do have one question for the police department. I see that we were talking about Sergeant Birch leaving again.
Yeah.
Is this just like a reprint of the same thing, or is this just acknowledging his time in service, or?
So I typically prepare those for the last month's events.
Okay.
So it may have come up in discussion at a previous meeting, but this is just reflecting the events that occurred last month, and last month was when he put us two weeks in his disposition.
Okay.
So that's why it's in this report, because this covers everything from September.
I'm going to be a squeaky wheel. It says in here that he left for higher pay. Again, he's a sergeant here, or was a sergeant here at Edgewood, right? And he's going to be an individual contributor at Elsmere?
Individual contributor.
He will be an officer.
He will be an officer, not a leader.
Not a sergeant.
So he'd be compensated at a higher rate to be an individual contributor at a smaller city?
Yes.
Okay.
So to speak, but.
And I'm not putting that on your shoulders, that's something we can't control right now. But I would ask, I would ask that going forward, when we do the budget, because this is what that we consider this.
So right now, the chief and I are working on gathering that information, very similar to what we did with the fire department last year.
Yes.
Where we bring in, and we give you that information and look at it. Contracts right now, so when Brian Birch was here working for us, he was under a contract. He was a retiree we hired. Some communities are taking those contracts to kind of integrate in the fact that they'll pay you less, but they'll give you a health insurance dollar amount that they put in on top of that, and then they give you all these kind of add-ons to it. When we went back and evaluated what we offer, what we did, we were not that far off to the number amount that was being told us originally. So, and I don't think I'm willing to, for a contract person, to give every savings we would get hiring a contract. If we're going to do that, we'll go back out and hire an officer that is hired, employed, ready to be here for the next 10, 15 years, hopefully more, but we'll do that. But we want to make sure that we are competitive. And I think when the chief and I have looked at it on the contract side, outside of the fact that we're going to give someone $15,000 for not taking our insurance when they're qualified to take the state's insurance, then we just kind of have, I think, a community that was desperate and was doing anything they could to hire someone.
I'm just looking for confidence from you guys.
We want to make sure, we research that to make sure that we are competitive, and we're doing that right now to put together. And then our next phase is to start looking at all the salaries of all the ranks that we have and how we compete with the communities that we think we should be competing against. And we'll do that. My hope is, early spring, we should have all of that information to start. I don't want to do like I did last year where I give it to you at the end of May on the second reading of the budget.
There was some like sinewy circumstances last year, too.
Yeah, it was. So we want to get it early enough that you can ask questions, and we can go back and do additional research if you ask us to do that. But we are looking at that right now to make sure.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate it.
I had one more question.
Yes.
It has to do with the Kroger. I was just wondering if there's been any problems up there. I've noticed several times that on the north entrance of Kroger, that people were, it's only, it's a right turn in, right turn out only. People are constantly turning there, and I didn't know if there's been an uptick on accidents, or if there's been any other issues up there that we might need to address.
Not that I am aware of at this point. In the report, I think I put some of the call volume that we've received up there to this point, and it's about what we expected. It's about a call a day that we're having. We have had a couple of traffic accidents. As far as I'm aware, nothing at that specific entrance. And I know that is designed to be a right turn in, right turn only, but I don't know that there's any actual signage that says no left turn anywhere.
There used to be, and it's gone, and now the sign that's there is actually, they put a stop sign on it.
It's been, yeah.
Somebody hit it, I guess.
I think from the trucks going in.
Yeah. And so it would probably be helpful if we had some better signage there, and, but as far as I'm aware, as far as traffic accidents at that particular entrance, we haven't had any. Most of the calls that have been there, it's been about 50/50 between officer-initiated calls, our officers are up there doing regular patrols through the parking lot, walkthroughs through the business. I know we've had a few theft reports from up there already, some of them internal, some of them external. But we have not had, as far as I'm aware at this point, any major issues as far as, you know, significant jumps in call volume or significant issues related to.
Okay. That's good. Are we responsible for that signage, or?
No, that's their responsibility.
Because they have it on, I think they have it on the other.
It's not on that side either. Maybe going out, it says no left turn.
Yeah.
But I think what you're indicating is the people on Dixie Highway are swinging around and coming in, which I don't know that there's a sign you can put on that side that tells you you can't turn in there because if you.
I think there used to be one that just said no left turn, no entrance or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be, no, do not enter.
Yeah.
But then you don't know if you're coming right and you read it, are you thinking, oh, I can't enter there? So I don't know that there's a sign that you can put facing Dixie Highway from the, that stops you from turning in.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know in other circumstances in similar places, they'll sometimes put those plastic barriers up so that you're not capable of making that turn, but I don't, I don't know what the best.
We thought about that, but the other thing is, is you've got the other businesses across the street, and they want access through the median. So it's kind of a, we're stymied.
Yeah.
Chief Dickman, I think when I talked to you, you had not seen that much of an uptick, maybe a couple of calls for service there. I know there was one accident at the intersection.
Yeah. We've had a few accidents in the area there, and then some other normal, typical business responses there to service. Nothing that's out of the norm, that's outpacing any other businesses in the area for calls for service.
Jim said your keys are ready, too, to be picked up.
Perfect. And I did hear back from the Kroger project manager about some other issues, so I think we're getting everything resolved.
I just thought about that, so I don't want to forget it again.
Excellent.
But your keys are ready to pick up to the building.
Thanks.
Chief, thank you very much. And then last but not least, but on recreation, and we did kind of discuss a little with Lucas. He put forth his pictures of what's going on as well and what's forthcoming. I'd also like to then address item number 21, 20, I guess, from the standpoint of FEMA has asked us from the standpoint of presenting a resolution to designate Brian Deener from the standpoint as the designated agent, applicant agent for this Locust Lane slippage.
So we have the project approved, and now we're working through the process of road repair and then what's called mitigation, and that would be stabilizing. It's about a $900,000 project. And again, you're, we're dealing with federal FEMA, so we're working through every step we can get. And Rick will tell you, it's a very interesting step so far. It's the first time I've ever gone through a FEMA grant application reimbursed, so it's new to me as well. So I don't know all their acronyms and all of that. But all I know is when they show up on site, there's usually five or six of them, and we seem to start right back from the beginning of how much work have we done on this project so far, which would be zero, because we're waiting for them to approve it, because for $900,000, I don't want to mess that up and find out that the cost is not going to be reimbursed. And it is 100% reimbursement, so we're working through that. So this resolution just is, probably should have been done in the beginning, but we're needing it to do so we can move along now through the rest of the process. And it just gives me as the designation to work with FEMA and request the grants and assign anything that they need to have assigned.
You need a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I guess, yeah. I liked the presentation of TAB V-3-2, designation of the applicant agent, and that would be Brian Deener of the city of Edgewood. That would be the resolution. So, yes, please.
Say it.
You two are seconding, you're first. Okay. Jeff is first, Rob is second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
Mr. Barlidge?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
Approval has been given, go ahead for the FEMA and presentation for Brian Deener as the agent involved. Tonight, we have an ordinance, 2025-03-01 is the closing of Tupman Lane. This is the second reading, Mr. Wickman.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance of the city of Edgewood in Kent County, Kentucky, closing Tupman Lane as described herein to public use. And by summary, the ordinance simply closes Tupman Lane.
And would entertain a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2025-03-01.
Joe?
Say it.
Rob? Any discussions on that?
Pretty no one.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
Mr. Barlidge?
Yes.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
We also have a municipal order tonight, and that's 2025-08, which is the amendment to the personnel policies.
You have, I believe you have a memory.
Mr. Deener, you have the badge.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Nitschke here in a second, but you have a memo describing it and the request for it, and Belinda is ready to answer any questions for that or to give any background and feedback to it.
It seems reasonable to me.
It just simplifies the way you do it. And I will let you know, we've checked it, we like randomly keep checking, keep travel. It updates on the federal site. One day it might be $75 per diem, the next day it might be $68. So it's running based on inflationary rates in areas, local areas, so I think it's probably the best way to do it. They have to look it up, they have to type in where they're going, they have to attach that to it, and so it will make it a lot easier to do it that way. We don't have, we've had zero to actually do the per diem, because it's been so low, they just can't do it when they travel to Richmond on training for a police officer. So they take the city-issued credit card, and we've been having some issues with those credit cards being kind of hacked, and then we have to lock them and do it again. So I think if we do it the right way, and the per diem is based on the governmental allowance that's provided, that they have to do depending on it, we never should have to adjust this again. It will just be based on inflationary rates.
And the assessment is by zip code, I would assume? So if I'm traveling to Berkeley, it's going to be different than if I'm traveling to Richmond, Kentucky?
100%.
Okay.
Yeah, we, yeah. So next week, I will be going to a conference in Tampa. It is totally different than if I was going to a conference in Lexington. Or it could be the same, it's just, it's just based on those local rates.
Okay.
Is how it's calculated.
It's a federal website, and you can also pick like what fiscal year you're traveling in. So if you're, you know, it's a different fiscal year than your current one, and then you even, you know, put in the zip code.
We also try to write the policy if an individual just cannot afford to fork out money or ask for that. They can still request the issue of the credit card to use it, and then the department head would make that decision and allow them to do that or not, because we wanted to make sure that they would have the ability to do that as well.
Do you need a motion?
I need an approval.
Municipal order 2025-08.
Okay. Jeff? Rob? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
Mr. Barlidge?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
Municipal order 2025-08 does pass on the amendment to the personnel policies. Tonight, we have a couple of up-and-coming events, and one of them, first of all, is the Fall Chair Yoga starts on October the 22nd, which is two days from now, at 11:00 in the morning at Liberty Hall, and it's free. And please register, pre-register if you can from the standpoint, so we have enough chairs down there for everybody as well.
We just filled up today.
We did fill it up? Oh, gosh, because I was going to say.
If you've not been to Liberty Hall in a long period of time, if you do get to go, the floor is done in the main two event center areas. The restrooms have been completed and all been brought up to date, so all the flooring now has been finished, all the restrooms are up to date, and I mean, it just looks awesome. So if you get a chance, if you're down there or something and see the guys working or something, just go in and check it out, because it looks really nice.
Well, the ladies will enjoy this, I can tell you that right now, but that's great. That's October the 22nd, and it starts at 11:00. It's full, but at the same time, you know, enjoy what you can. Trick or treating in Edgewood is going to be on October the 31st, and that's from 6:00 until 8:00. If you have your light on, you are accepting children and passing out candy. If your light is off, the children, of course, will continue to go on to the next, to the next home as well. And again, from the standpoint, we'll try to get fire and police from the standpoint of stopping out and passing out the cookie bag, the good bags at the intersections as well. So anyway, that's October the 31st, and that's from 6:00 until 8:00. Letters to Santa can be dropped off in the Santa's mailbox from the North Pole that will be here in the city building, and that's going to be on November the 17th, and he's going to drop it off. And that's going to run until December the 5th. And then from the standpoint, we need to have everybody put their emails address in there so that Santa can get back to you, because after the 5th, he's going to be typing and emailing the notices back to you. So we need to have your letters in on the earliest, the 17th of November, the latest